Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hello.
We're gonna give both just one more minute and then we'll kick off. I'm sure the link on chat for the notes. Then go ahead and mark your attendance. And if you go ahead and prefer to add a new row with your information. I got a facial today, so this is just be on camera. It's shiny. Um, any new friends wanna introduce themselves? You can do it on chat. You can come off camera, you know, whatever your comfort is.
Hey, my name's Nicole Schwartz and I've been involved in the vulnerability disclosure group and the Sasa framework group previously, but I suddenly have a lot more time on my hands and run multiple nonprofits based on increasing the diversity of the cybersecurity industry and actually give a talk with HD more about, uh, you know, being more inclusive in tough times. So I figured I'd join this and see if I can help out at all.
Beautiful. Welcome, Nicole. Thank you. Um, all right. So Ichiro, I know you're working on blog posts. Did you have any updates on that?
Okay. Hi. Good evening, everybody, for my time. Um, and welcome, Nicole. So I, um, I just got some comments on on the post, the ones that are still being edited, like the remaining two parts, I guess. I think it's just two planets are remaining. So I just got some comments today on them and I would check it off and make some correction, whichever corrections that they want me to make. And I feel like that's where we are at the blog post right now. Because I just got an email of, um, a comment on it. And obviously, that should be about a correction. Not so sure, but I'm going to check.
Perfect. Yeah, I know some folks were in there when I came through, so. Uh, are we still on target for mid-September release?
Okay, I really hope it works, but I'm not, I don't know. I don't know how it's going to come through for mid-September because I'm going to edit. Um, getting feedbacks takes a while, so I really am not sure if it's going to work for mid-September. But we are going to be working towards that. But if it doesn't, it's still fine.
Yeah, that's fine. And then you, you, you got connected with marketing, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Um, this last Thursday, we had our lightning talk, uh, where the participants pull up the link. I can't type and talk at the same time, but, uh, the participants of our summer mentorship program with LFX. Thank you, Stacy. Yay. Uh, they participated in letting talks based on the project on, what is it? Uh, rough uh, project. I butchered that name, but, um, you can check that out. It was pretty cool. Um, very thank you for everybody here on the bear group that helped push the mentorship forward and get funding from TAC. Um, we can think about for 2026. The next time we want to do this, if we want to aim for spring, because I think fall is already too late. Um, go ahead and put in that uh, funding request to the tax, so we can aim for, for winter or, uh, do summer again. Any thoughts or preference from the group? Thank you to that who's taking notes. Stacy, would you know when the tax funding is? I know Marcella, nobody, or anybody on the call.
Well, I think it's coming up, um, but I don't know the exact date off the top of my head. No. Uh, I can find out for you pretty quickly, though.
But that would be for fall, right?
Oh, yeah, that would be. Uh, so we're only looking at maybe doing another internship program in the summer or springtime.
Yeah, because we gotta find a group.
Okay.
Yeah, I know Marcela and I are at capacity.
Totally. Okay, let me, um, yeah, let me find out. Too bad Marcel's not here. I know she probably knows this off the top of her head, but I don't have all those kind of dates shoved in there, uh, so.
Yeah.
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 Um.
Okay.
What else was I gonna say? Oh, also regarding the mentorship program, uh, when we were at Open Source Summit Europe, Cairo and I chatted and I, uh, suggested to him that maybe we should get together and kind of document his process for how he mentored. So that we kind of have like a template so that we can pass on to all the projects who might be interested in mentoring, but maybe haven't done it before and are a little scared that it's going to be too time consuming and things like that, right? And so I, he was all for it. So maybe, I don't know if anyone wants to like help with that effort, but I was chatting with him about it and I will be happy to take the lead and try and get some, some of that documented so that we can maybe offer this up to other projects that are like a little intimidated by doing the mentorship program.
Would anybody on the call be interested in helping Stacy with that?
Sorry, I didn't get the explanation.
Uh, so if anybody would be interested in helping Stacy, so Cairo just went through the summer mentorship program uh, with LFX and we are looking to do this again for another semester. So the goal is to work with Cairo and document his procedures and his steps and all that, so that we have kind of like a framework that we can hand off to other open source projects. So when we redo this in spring or summer, we can be like, hey, Project X, we're gonna be doing this and funding, you know, Y amount of mentees. We have our documents of what to expect and how to, you know, recommendations on how to close. Um, it'll be kind of documents we can hand off to the next projects.
Okay, um, I would love to. Stacy.
Amazing.
Okay, I don't know. Do you still need extra hands to contribute to the process? Because while I do not have so much details on what is going on, I could reach out to Stacy so that I can help. Does that work?
Yeah, that's fabulous. I can start like a, um, a thread and, uh, and for the three of us and we can, you know, chat with Cairo and kind of start, start that whole process. Perfect.
Okay.
Beautiful. Yeah, I'll, I'll get with Marcela and see when the next tack is, um, even if we do it early, just submit the one for spring. Um, while we have it top of mind, we don't forget.
Is there, um, so I got the video of the lightning talks, uh, from Reden as well. And I was gonna chop them up so that they become their own little videos uh, for each mentee to use and for us to highlight these mentees. Uh, thought it might be great in some, you know, just social promotion stuff. Uh, so I'll work with marketing and Sally on that. Um, but is there a plan? I know we had, we had written up a, a blog a while ago, like before we did the program. Is there a plan for a post program and like blog recap? And maybe we can, um, ask the mentors and the mentees to kind of contribute. Do, do you know anything about that at this point?
That I do not know, but I think it'd be, uh, an awesome idea. Um.
Okay. Let me check with the um, Sally and marketing.
Yeah, we did a blog in the Alpha Omega project for our mentorship and it could be kind of like the same style template. Um. And I like, I like how they designed the page. Uh, they had the students and then you can click on like mentorship blogs. And each of them, oh, no, it just takes use of the blog, but it's in there. It's somewhere in there in 2023.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I, I hear you. I think I found that link earlier when I was doing a little bit of research on this, so. Um, yeah, I think it'd be nice to kind of recap kind of how we can't, how you and Marcela and like the bear working group kind of spearheaded this effort and then go through, uh, you know, how this all came about and, and, um, and what, what happened and how great these, these mentees were.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, we can do, um, maybe a collab blog, you, me, Marcela, Cairo, um, and then we can get quotes and uh, because I know when we did it with the Alpha Omega, we had a blog from the mentor side and like the program process. And then we had a blog from the mentee side. So the one I shared was the mentees. Um.
Okay. Perfect.
Right. And then while we're on this subject, I know we're meeting tomorrow for podcast, but the idea was also to do a podcast and then the mentees and we can, with marketing, work with them to tie it with the, um, with the blog posts. Yeah, that gives time for you to do all the work.
Uh, for, for that podcast, I was thinking that would be you, Marcela, Cairo, and then all of the mentees, right? Uh, do we wanna invite, uh, was it Patrick and Aditya from Get Tough as well, or just pick one of them? Since we're gonna have kind of a full house.
I was thinking of doing the two episodes.
Oh, okay.
One is Cairo, uh, we said Patrick and then Adita, have her come in.
Mentors and then mentees.
Yep.
Great. Okay, got it.
Yeah, I think that would be a, a cool uh, blog.
Yeah, awesome.
Okay, this looks like certain projects incorrectly. Um, and with that, if anybody knows any projects that might be interested in running a mentorship in summer, in spring or summer, uh, let us know. Um, we should probably do some outreach to see who uh, maybe like a form or just message on the Slack channel or the Slack thread and let us know if your project is interested. Uh, that way we can start planning and all those pieces. Of course, we can. And then anything else with the mentorship or lightning talks?
No, that was great. I'm sorry I didn't make that meeting last Thursday. Um, I'm still kind of digging out from, uh, from Open Source Summit the week before. But yeah, it was great. I, I listened to the whole thing this morning and was like super excited to see everyone present what they did and it was really great. And I think marketing is gonna start promoting it. Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, sorry to interrupt. It was, uh, it had a nice diverse set of projects in that, in that representation.
Yeah, that's really good.
Um, all right, next topic. This one's on me. I was supposed to make a form for collecting quotes for tip of the month. Uh, I reached out to Prince, uh, who originally said he was gonna handle it. Uh, he's dealing with some personal things at the moment, so he's not um, not focused, so come up with ways to kind of bring this back up and get, uh, insights from the project team. So I'll get that back on my list. Uh, to collect quotes. And then I don't know when our next community office hour is. Um, trying to see on my calendar. I don't not here.
Looks like it's the 25th of September. That's what we have reserved on the calendar right now.
Okay. Hmm. Anybody have ideas or topics for the next? Do you have a calendar? I thought you had a calendar. There. Um. Hmm. Just sort of like potential. Maybe I don't know which one's this one. You. Um. Yeah. Um. So for the 25th, we, our topic was how do I manage an open source project? Um. I think so. I have notes. Um. Into that. Okay, thank you. Trying to figure out how to transfer from my MacBook to my, my work laptop. Let's see. Um. Uh, so do you have, uh, suggestions for speakers or how do I manage open source projects?
Most the speakers be within open SSF or just anybody doing amazing thing in open source?
Yeah. That's like everybody in the Slack group that way.
Yeah, maybe we could write some messages in the, I was thinking the working group channels and just put a call out for folks. See if anyone's interested. I can, I can work on that today.
Appreciate that. Um, securing AI future, we can probably have, well, I was gonna say we can have Jay on that one. Um, I can be a speaker on that one, then we can find folks from the AI working group.
Uh, Mihai is always like super great and willing to work with us. We can tap Mihai and see if he's available.
Okay. Yeah, we can probably just hit up the working group. I know, but like, hey, this is for your office hours to talk about securing AI future, but to bring people into your your group. Cool. So I think that that, uh, covers those two. Perfect. Then anything else on office hours, any suggestions for topics in the future, speakers?
When would those office hours be falling in November, December? Because I bet it's gonna be around holiday times, right? Should, should we, should we skip? Should we reschedule or?
Maybe we do one in November and then call it a day.
Okay.
Um. Then Thanksgiving.
Yeah, it's on the 27th, which is right when our bear working group is scheduled uh, office hours.
So either, I guess the 13th, well, 13th or 20th. I don't know which makes more sense.
So there's a governing board meeting on the 20th.
Okay, so 13th.
13th might, yeah, might work better.
Yeah. Um. Be.
And then both cancel December.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll ping Reden for that.
Yeah, we ended up doing one in December, but I don't remember too many people showing up last year. So. Cool. And then we just need to figure out a topic. Um, but we got some from that one. Cool. Uh, any other topics, discussion, would like to do? Fun stories? Do we have any, um, open source conferences coming up that we might want to have maybe networking or something? Because we have QCon in November.
Yeah, QCon, well, Open Source, uh, Security Con as well, which we're co-hosting with the CNCF. Uh, so it's a joint venture between Open SSF and CNCF. So we're putting that on as a colo event. Uh, the day, like that colo day, which I think is before QCon happens. I think that's November 10th. Um, so yeah, if anyone's going to QCon and you wanna check out Open Source Security Con, uh, please register for the, for the all access pass for the colos. Um, and then I did have a call out in the general channel. Uh, if anyone's in Texas, we, uh, I know Catherine had reached out to me and said, hey, I'm going to Texas Linux Fest. So I wasn't sure if anyone's at, um, you know, planning on going to that, uh, but if you are, you reach out in that thread in the general channel and we can possibly try and organize a little open SSF, uh, casual meetup. Um, and then the other community day event that we have scheduled for this year is, uh, November 4th, but that's Korea. So it's a half day event in Korea. And otherwise, it's just, you know, CFP Central, right? So whatever's coming up for CFPs, which I have to kind of get my head wrapped around as well.
For those conferences, you mean?
Just in general for next year, right? They're already starting to pop up, I think. Um, I think all day DevOps, which is.
Does it ever stop? Does the?
No, it doesn't. Yeah.
No, no.
It just continues.
Well, which one's open for next year? We can probably throw in a bear.
Yeah, I, uh, I don't have anything specific in mind, but I would say keep your eyes on the CFP announce channel uh, in our Slack, because that's where I think folks tend to, um, post for that. And yeah, if you have any talks that you know that are coming up or, you know, any CFPs open, feel free to throw them in there.
I like that, John.
Yeah. I think, um, Foss Backstage is one. It's happening in Berlin in March. Um, and that one's open until the 27th of October. I'll post that in the channel soon. Yeah, there we go. And then, yeah, I'll just kind of continue to scour and, um, and post some stuff. I think that Sonus Type organizes that all-day DevOps, um, conference where it just goes for like 24 hours. So whatever time zone you're in, you can always catch like some of the, some of the talks. And they will be opening their CFP for that very soon. It's not up yet, but I know that they're working on it, so.
Very cool. Take, um, making a note for my tos. That's the month.
And then I would think that Fostum would be coming out with their call pretty soon, since that one happens in early February as well. That's another.
Yes.
European.
Oh, thanks for adding those. If all I didn't know there was different ways to watch it. Pretty cool. Um. All right, that's all I had. Um, if not, enjoy 33 minutes back.
I know.
Pleasure working with everybody and, uh, enjoy the rest of your day.
Yeah, take care, everybody. See ya.
Yeah.